I suggest we, we, we charge on. And for a head of school update, Martin.
Thanks, Thomas. Hi, everybody. It was May last time we did this. So we were, we're all still learning to lose, to use Zoom. We were in a kind of frenzy of learning how to deliver online teaching. We were in a fairly serious panic about how many students were likely to show up in September. And so I think we've come quite a long way since then, in many ways, although we're all still sat here in the corner of a computer screen, regrettably. But, you know, I think we should just acknowledge that as a school, the enormous amount of, of kind of effort and enterprise and ingenuity that has gone into keeping the show on the road and getting us to this point. And it's still not easy, but it's perhaps a slightly better situation than we were in, in May. If we look at recruitment, the, the faculty, which is taking a very pessimistic view of, of where our recruitment will end up in the sense of, you know, modeling in quite substantial losses of students that might decide not to come back after Christmas or whatever. Puts us 140 up on our target for students, actually kind of counting students sat in Zoom rooms and laboratories and so on is, is more like 450. So that's not ideally where we would want to be, but it's an awful lot better than being 450 over, sorry, under. And you know, I would just like to thank everybody that put a lot of work into that. The, the recruitment missions teams, academics supporting those teams, reaching out to students. That, that, that's how we got to here. Now, of course, it's throwing up its own challenges. Teaching those students is, is, is really difficult. And I recognize at the moment that people are having to go above and beyond because it's only very recently that we've been able to release the budget to start to relieve the pressure that all of those extra students brings. But we are in the process of hiring 20 additional senior tutors across the school. I think, Steve, did you interview yesterday or is it today? MIE's got five about to arrive. There's a couple in geography and quite a lot in GDI.
Yeah, we interviewed yesterday. We interviewed 15 candidates and made 5.5 appointments.
Yeah, okay. So that's, you know, those people are coming online as quickly as possible to, to try and support delivering top quality experience to, to all that large number of students that we've got at the moment. So that, I think, is, is positive. We now do have a budget. It's a sort of an emergency budget. It's a budget in name only, in a sense. But, you know, there are amounts in headings against all of our activities now. And, you know, that means we're able to begin to ease things up. So I think I said in the message last Friday, for example, that individual research accounts are now back up and running. So Sarah and Department for Research Leads will be in contact with academics about those. Not with quite as much in as we might be used to, but they're there. Given that we're probably not going to be flying across the world in the near future, that's, that's probably a positive. And that's just an example of, you know, we have money in most of our budgets now. One thing to bear in mind, and those of you that are budget holders will have had messages from Lizzie, is that that's a very strange budget. It was kind of conceived in the middle of the summer when we were in full crisis mode. It doesn't fully recognize the fact that we might now be 400 students over. And so what Lizzie is doing alongside that budget is forecasting what we actually need to spend over the coming year and recognizing that those numbers are probably bigger in many cases than what's in budget. So if you are coming up against kind of pressure points, you need to be talking to, to, to Lizzie and to your line managers to try and, and work those through. And we can build those into the forecast. So there is an easy, within the university, there is a kind of financial easing, but still considerable nervousness about retaining all of our students for the, for the entire academic year. And so it's not quite business as usual yet. That means that Kay and I are still signing off every piece of spending that comes through the school and nobody will be happier than Kay and I when we no longer have to do that. We had the results from a pulse survey of our students last week. Broadly, I think that breaks down to they are hugely appreciative of the work that has gone into delivering online teaching and the innovation that's supported that. They're also feeling like all of us, I guess, pretty ground down. They're finding the workloads very high. I fear that might be a consequence of, of all our efforts to produce all singing, all dancing online content. We might have inadvertently, in some cases, produced more content. So that's, that's something we need to be aware of. And, and also clearly our students are having a very hard time more generally. And the press coverage recently and the events in Fallowfield over the past few weeks clearly haven't helped with that. Our student support teams and academic advisors have been doing a fantastic job of keeping in touch with students. But that's something that I think particularly over the last two weeks, as we're running to Christmas, we're really going to have to continue to be on top of. The university is going to begin testing students before they go home. This is very much kind of a moving picture, but my understanding is that we're looking to test 42,000 or to deliver 42,000 tests. I think it's two per student between the 30th of November and a week after that. So it's a massive logistical exercise that the reason that there was a big gap between the government's announcement and you hearing anything from the university on this is the government simply said, you're doing it. And figuring out how to do it is quite a significant challenge, but you can expect to see more detailed announcements on that. I think this week. So we will be able to offer a kind of clear path for our students for a kind of a finite end term and a trip home for Christmas for most of them. What else? Amongst all of this, since, since we last met in May, obviously still fantastic things going on in research. And, you know, we should just flag African cities and the digital environment platform as, as two massive wins on research amongst many others, including lots of successes around COVID impact research, which is coming on stream. So that's, that's really positive. And amidst all the efforts that we're making on, on teaching and student support, we, we need to remember the, the other kind of elements of our mission around research and social responsibility. And finally, I'll shut up and you can ask questions, but we're probably not going to have a Christmas party this year. Or at least if we did, it would look very much like this and we've probably all had enough of this. But Lorna and Johnny have been working on an alternative community event about which you will hear more shortly, which is the suggestion that we all individually and as a school might participate in the big community mapping event, which is coming up. Johnny, can you give us a date? It's gone out of my head.
Yeah, it's the 10th of December. It's your International Human Rights Day.
Okay, so you'll, you'll be hearing more from Lorna over the next little while, but we're going to try and make that something of a community event, a virtual Christmas party, as well as hopefully doing some good on, on Human Rights Day. So watch this space for that one. Okay, I'll shut up. Happy to take questions on anything and everything.
Um, so if there's any question that's, so we are going to have sort of an open Q and A with space for the entire sort of school leadership team to come in. There's quite a discreet question that's coming there from Karen. I wonder if you can speak to Martin about whether or not there's going to be tests for students when they return.
Yeah, I know that's being discussed. I can't give you a definitive answer on that, Karen, but that's, that's certainly part of the story. I think the focus at the moment is on how we get them home. And then we have a little bit more time to think about how we get them back again. But yeah, that is, in the, in the briefing I was in yesterday, that was mentioned.
Because we don't want to see, I think, a repeat of what we saw when we started, where many, many students had to isolate and felt very lonely away from home, sick. And they would have probably preferred not to have come and have had that sickness at home.
Yep.
Okay, there's lots of hands going up. Sure, let's, let's, let's take a couple. Abby and then Omits.
Hello. Yes, I wondered if there was an update.
Hang on. It's about PGR funding. It can wait until we've got PGR director and all the
Martin mentioned money. You mentioned there being loads more students. If we don't get more PGR, we're not going to have TAs.
Yeah, we are going ahead with digital recruitment, Abby.
Can you, is your question about something specific that Martin has just said? Or there's loads of hands going up. I'm going to just, we can wait. So what we're going to have is we're going to have a little bit more about student wellbeing. And we're going to have David come in, give us a quick update on how the transition to online is going in terms of students. Then we're going to have Liz come in and talk about the forms of support that are available, because I just think I'd like us all to be on that. And we know that students, there's a mixed picture. Some are having a great time, some obviously aren't. And then we will get to open questions, because some of these questions should be answered by people other than Martin. So you, please leave your hands up and, and we'll totally take the questions in the, in the order that they're up. But first of all, David, then Liz, and then we'll just open it up to all questions for the, for the school leadership team. All right. David.
Okay. Afternoon, everyone. When they mentioned testing in my job description, they didn't mention COVID testing anyway. So I've been asked by Thomas to update you and certainly there's been a lot happened since the last school board in May, when we had just moved to, to online teaching and assessment. And when recruitment was still in the balance. So I think we've, as Martin has just said, we've moved a long way in relation to that. Since then, we had successful online examinations last summer and we are moving to online examinations again at the end of the semester, increasing the options available for, for subjects to enable them to offer 48 hours or seven day examinations. We've also approved a huge number of program changes to ensure intended learning outcomes could be achieved and that assessment was appropriate, particularly in relation to practical lab courses and fieldwork. And then we also established working groups prioritizing communities, employability, widening participation, e-learning, international students, geospatial, field trips, student wellbeing. And these were all very, very well attended and they've also generated some additional groups that are carrying on working in relation to that. So we, I think as a, as a school, we've responded incredibly well. In terms of feedback and how well we're doing, then obviously we're reliant upon existing survey metrics to give us an indication. So despite the, the turbulence, we also had some very positive feedback from different data sources in relation to our performance against other parts of the uni, of the university. For NSS, seed had the highest satisfaction across the faculty and we were significantly above the university average. Particularly pleasing was that seed was the highest in the university for student voice. Sorry, second highest for the, for student voice, second highest for teaching quality and highest for organization and management. For the postgraduate survey, seed again was the highest in the faculty and significantly above the faculty average and the university average. So again, this was, was very pleasing and particularly as across all seven major groups of questions, seed satisfaction levels were above the University of Manchester and humanities averages. And particularly in areas of teaching and learning and assessment and feedback. Excuse me, which are areas we've particularly tried to emphasize. I think bearing in mind in all these surveys, we're dealing with, with particularly in the postgraduate survey, small numbers. But again, these are opportunities for students to feed back. Most recently, as Martin has just mentioned, we had the undergraduate three week pulse survey. Overall, 8% of seed students were in agreements or strong agreement that online lectures have been delivered well. I've just been looking at a slight update to that data this morning, which, which the, the survey, well, not accidentally, but it was, it was left open for a little bit longer. And it seems to have dipped down a little bit. And I don't know whether this is just disadvantaged students who, who suddenly decided to fill this in or whether some of the novelty is wearing off as we get longer into the term. So that's something to be mindful of. Also, student unions, the student union have also carried out a survey and again, seed did exceptionally well, the second highest in terms of satisfaction from across the university for one-to-one online teaching. So again, this was positive. Also, we had the student forum last week, which was with the undergraduate students. And again, that was, that was very positive from, from, certainly from my perspective. Students were largely content in a number of areas, but equally there are issues that are coming to our attention now. And I think there are three main issues that we, we need to focus on. One is study space, which many of you will be familiar with and which the university is working at, faculty is working at. And equally, the school is, is looking at. Workload is without doubt the biggest issue. And again, that was very much evidenced in some of this later day, data that I've seen this morning about students kind of really struggling with the workload. And I think anything we can do in respect of signaling clearly what our expectations are and balancing those out with the realities of where we are at the moment is, is really important. And then the third area is linking to communication and just clarifying with students. Because we're not dealing with the, the normal circumstances and custom and practice, there's a lot of explaining and additional explaining that needs to be done wherever possible. As mentioned again, the travel window is from the 3rd to the 9th of December. And government guidelines are that there should be no social or extracurricular activities from the 2nd of December. We will be carrying out a survey to, with students to find out which students will be staying in Manchester and in the location over the Christmas period, so that those students can be offered support. On campus teaching is due to start on the 4th of January, subject to whatever tier we are at, at that particular take stage. But lectures will remain online for the next semester and communications are due to go out, I think today or the next couple of days to students, just clarifying the expectations. So overall, we, we have achieved an enormous amount since the last school board. And none of it has, has happened by accident. So I want to thank everyone for the diligence and commitment to the student experience. It's been hugely challenging, but I think, you know, this has been a, a positive response from the school. So thank you to everyone.
Great. Thank you, David. Liz, are you willing to come in and talk to us about what we're doing to help student wellbeing?
Yeah, that's fine. Thanks, Thomas. Good afternoon, colleagues. And I'm going to touch on some of the stuff that David's mentioned and, and also draw on some of the, the data we have about how things are going for our students. And bear with me while I share my screen, please. So when, how's it going? How's it gone so far? So we're beginning to get some data in. So David talked about the three week survey of undergrads and we just have a look at some of those pointers. Bearing in mind, obviously I didn't realize that had been updated as recently as this morning. But with 80%, thinking that the online delivery has gone well and that strongly agree and agree, which is great. And a little lower for online seminars. And they, again, 85% very high that they're, they, they enjoy being able to access lectures when it suits them. And, and that 88% can contact and get hold of teaching staff. And one that's particularly pleasing to me there at the bottom, that 92% know who their academic advisors are. And I've also had sort of other information coming in, which I'm sure will gather across the year from talking to colleagues who've had student committee meetings in their programs. And so I spoke to Jen from Geography and my own program, Primary PGCE. And also some, a research pilot that's been going on in MIE. And to, with the S R C funded project, looking at how students across the UK adjusted to the emergency online learning. And the pilot was tested and seen. So we have some information. I'm going to share that with you now, just sort of, it's beginning to come in. So in terms of the student wellbeing, what appears to be happening is it's split into two aspects. One is the practical problems that are emerging through lockdown and also emotional stresses. So workload, as David mentions, is something that seems to be appearing quite regularly. Also to do with finance. So some students whose families have parents have been furloughed, parents have lost houses. So students' financial positions and stability has been changed quite considerably. One student actually was the only breadwinner in the house at some point and was trying to study and bring in money. Study space has come up very over and over again. And I'll talk about what's happening regarding that. Interesting in terms of the lectures, lots of the students seem to like the live lectures rather than just pre-recorded because they like to ask questions at the end. And, and then wifi, that was another issue. Then looking at emotional stress or anxiety, again, not surprisingly to do with loneliness and isolation and that ability to remain connected during this time. And some stress about assessment, what the assessment will look like this year for students and then those who have been affected by illness or in fact bereavement. So what I wanted to share next was how we're trying to respond to these information as that comes in and on our subsequent support. So, and I think the latest information on study spaces is now it's 800 being made available. I think that was up to last Wednesday. And there's some links there and I'll put these in the chat after I've spoken about how they, how students can book those rooms. Again, getting help online is a really useful for those students who are struggling in that way. For those who have issues regarding accommodation, there's a link for them too, and also the hard student hardship fund. So those are the kind of practical responses, some of the practical issues that were raised. And now if you look at some of the emotional stress and anxiety. All the time ideas have been brought forward by student support and the library service and another support services to tackle the, their response to students feeling connected, feeling supported. So again, I've just put some links there to some of the more recent services available. And I'll put those in the, in the chat. Next, in terms of what other resources are available. So every month since we, since September, myself and colleagues have done a number of webinars to do with academic advising and wellbeing. And you can see the first three there that have already happened. And the link there gives you a link to the videos of those sessions, should you want to revisit those. And my final one will be this December, the 2nd, and it's looking at engaging with counselling services. And there's a Zoom link to it as well. And if you just keep your eyes open to my Lizzie's links emails, because every time a new service comes on board or support for students comes on board, or indeed support for you with academic advising, I will filter those links and send them to you. So just looking forward now, coming soon. If you, again, I'll put these in Lizzie's links, but again, I think to work on reducing isolation to increase communication. There are now some virtual breakout rooms, virtual studies, study rooms that are coming on board so that students can study together, can meet together as they would in a student common room. So seed virtual breakout rooms, and that started Thursday 12th last week. And the library online study sessions, they sound interesting. So you can study together, you can study in silence. You can then meet in the breakout room and talk. The library staff will be there and available to you. And also some of the student support team will be there as well. So look out for those online library study sessions. And I believe tomorrow, the university is also launching a 24/7 mental health service. So let's, we'll keep our eyes open for that in emails. And our own student support team, Rashid and Rebecca are working on having a peer-to-peer mental health mentoring pilot. And we're hopefully starting something with that, with training after Christmas. So that's where it's peer-to-peer student support for mental health. And so that's kind of just a quick update of what's been, what is, and what's happening in the future. Thank you, Thomas.
Great. Thanks, Liz. That was really interesting. So now we move to, to open Q and A. There's a bunch of hands already up. Abby was clearly at the front of that queue. Would you like to come in now, Abby?
Yeah, sorry, I was just chewing a piece of food. Yes, it was just about the update on PGR funding. Obviously, this is an important part of maintaining a very healthy research environment, and particularly with areas of sub-disciplines that have less external funding opportunities than others. But very critically, if our numbers are high and remain high, it has knock-on effect for TAs as well. So it's just to get a sense of where we're at with that funding and whether, what, what it looks like in the short and medium term going forward.
Shall I answer that? Is that okay? So I am Laura Black, PGR Director. So yeah, I mean, what we know so far is that there are going to be some studentships. What I don't know is how many and what that budget will look like in terms of how it compares to, to a normal year, shall we say. But what I will say is likely to be really competitive because we've got a, a huge number of deferred applications from last year. With students, when they heard about the student suspension of the studentship competition, deferred their application in the hope of achieving some funding in September 21. So in addition to the usual round of applicants, we're going to have this extra kind of group of applicants deferred and are awaiting decisions on that. And so we know it's going to be more competitive than ever. But the doctoral training partnerships, which you mentioned, are now welcoming overseas applications. So I think there's a cap of them of about 30%. So the S R C, who is kind of one of the main supporters externally of our PhD student, now are open to overseas applications, whereas before they weren't. And also the A H R C version of that as well. So I guess I am aware that those two doctoral training partnerships don't support all of the disciplines within seed. And, you know, that does factor into our decision-making round allocations. And we're going to kind of take that forward. So I'm hoping to take some kind of strategy documents or social, school policy resources committee next week. And then have some decision information to disseminate after that. Okay.
Thank you for the update.
All right. Thanks, Laura. Omits?
Hi. Couple of questions. The first one is about students wellbeing. So I'm really worrying about our international students and their wellbeing because most of my students are from China. And some of them are just, I was talking online this morning, some of them are in China, but they booked their tickets, they are coming over here just before Christmas. Now, many of our students are going to leave, they are coming over here. What kind of things and places that support these students? And I mean, it's okay to say for the home students, they've got somewhere to go in Britain, but as money, international students, they can't book flight and go back on Christmas period. I don't know, is it really, what kind of message we are sending to our international students for the second semester? Are they, are we asking them to come over here or not? It's not clear. I think we need to be really clear what we are telling our students because it is really irresponsible from university, university's perspective, telling students to come to Manchester if COVID-19 is really bad at the moment. That was the first question. Also, a couple of my question, students raised concerns last week about seeing too many policemen in the, in the campus area. And they felt, international students, they felt really scared. And the second one is about the recent incident, about racist incident on the campus. What are we, what are the actions we are taking? And because our international students last year, they faced racism and they raised this concern with me, our Chinese students. And what kind of things we are doing to stop this happening and what kind of message we are sending our students? That we are, and we are an anti-racist, we are an anti-racist university. What Laura, the senior management team is doing. Thank you.
Martin, the Do you want me to take the, the second one first and then perhaps David could have a go at the, the first one? So you will have seen the message that came out from, from Johnny and Laura yesterday in relation to the events over the weekend. We do have to be very careful about We do have to be very careful about what we say about those events because they are alleged incidents at the moment. We only know what we've seen in the press and a very short video clip. The university has launched an investigation. And those security guards have been suspended without prejudice until we know the, the outcome of that investigation. But clearly, you know, that's not. If the, if the allegation is true, that's not something that any of us wants to see. And that's why Laura and Johnny sent out a supportive message to our students yesterday. But until, you know, I'm not sure, and we really have to wait and see what the outcome of that investigation and the actions that follow from that are.
I think on a, on a kind of broader EDI level, then issues around race and inequalities kind of that students from, the terms are being disputed, kind of people of colour or BAME backgrounds are experiencing is extremely high up the kind of priority list in terms of the work of EDI on a school level. There's quite a lot of discussions at faculty and university level as well. But I think the, the EDI staff group met for the first time last week as a kind of reforming. And it was one of the things that we started talking about then and started talking about as a theme of work to take forward. And I'm in the process of setting up a, a separate student EDI focus group so that people who are interested in taking this work forward from a student perspective can kind of have the space to do that a little bit more clearly. Because I think in the past, we've, the one committee has meant that sometimes student EDI issues haven't, haven't come to the fore as much as, as they hopefully can do going forward.
Yeah, I think that's, that's absolutely right. And the important thing about the message yesterday was, you know, whatever happened over the weekend, it, it had an impact on our students. And that's why it was important to get, get that message out promptly yesterday.
Thank you, David.
Okay, so certainly absolutely a huge priority of ours is looking at the students' wellbeing, home and international students. And what I can say without being able to list it off in, in, in kind of comprehensive form, is the amount of support that's provided is phenomenal for students arriving. Now, again, you know, that goes from picking students up, providing support when they arrive. Inevitably, they will go into quarantine, so there's support provided for them then. In terms of whether they need to come, there is an email which arrived ten minutes before the meeting just clarifying the communications that are due to go out any time to students to explain whether they need to come to the university or not. Because inevitably, lots of this just seems like a fairly straightforward decision and a fairly obvious decision of whether they need to come or not. But actually, when you go across the programmes, there are certain programmes where they have to be here and certain programmes where they don't and where the internal learning outcomes can't be met. So we've been going through a process of identifying those programmes where students have to arrive or where they have to be here and equally where students can provide remote provision. So that will be going out in the next day or so, I should imagine.
Thanks, David. So I know there's a lot happening in the chat. I just see that as, I'm trying to take it in chronological order. So we're going to go to Alfredo and then we'll take some of the questions that came up in the chat. And then go to the other people that have got their hands up. All right.
Yes, some questions. First, to Liz, if there's results for PGT students, not only for U G. And the other one is strategically thinking, but I think David started to answer that question is, why do we need to have students back in semester two when the majority of the classes will be online? So, you know, it's, and I know that students are arriving from different countries at the end of October, beginning of November, right now, et cetera. So what is the purpose of having them if classes will be online?
Alfredo, thank you. I'll answer your first one. All the resources that I've signposted to, as far as I know, are available to postgraduate students as well. So they're not just for undergrads. So the ones I've signposted previously and today, so they're open to everybody.
No, the, the results of the, of one of the one programme.
Of these are the resources, sorry. No, there's been no post, there's been no survey of postgrad yet. It was because the undergrads started first and it was done three weeks in. And so there hasn't been any survey of postgrad yet, sorry.
I just, so in terms of postgraduate, the survey is being done this week and will close on Friday and hopefully we get some data to you next week. And in terms of students coming, what's, what's really interesting from a lot of the data is despite all the challenges and the difficulties, students want to be in Manchester where they can. And there's data to suggest that when they are home, there's high levels of dissatisfaction with what's going on, which is quite interesting.
Yeah, and it's worth saying, Alfredo, that the, the communication that will go out about semester two tomorrow, I think, makes it clear that there is no requirement for students to come back. So if they don't want to, if they want to take semester two online, they can. So there's no sense in which students are being encouraged to come back against their will. If, if they want to come, you know, we're here to provide for them. But if they want to study online in semester two, they can do that as well.
All right, thank you, Martin. Kay, you had something you wanted to say about study spaces?
Yes, thank you, Thomas. Yes, it just links into what Liz was presenting there in relation to the study space that is bookable through the library, et cetera. This is just to also announce, we have been discussing this at length at school level as well to try and open up as much space as we're able. Recognising there's still a lot of activity going on at faculty and institutional level. So Kelly and her team and Linda Rollinson have been looking at study space in Arthur Lewis Building. Over the last couple of weeks, we've been able to move our priority PGR students back to their desks in ALB. They were, they were actually using the ALB PC clusters. And therefore, we've been able to free up that space in addition to the common room space in ALB and a couple of rooms or two, three or four rooms that could be used for group study space. So we hope to be able to email students tomorrow to inform them of the school, school space. We are sharing this space obviously with Soss because they share the building with us. But students will be informed on how they can book that space for three and a half hour slots. We've coordinated with estates on cleaning touchpoints, et cetera, in between those slots. So that should give us some scope to look at about around seventy, seventy to eighty spaces for students in the ALB building. We will obviously have to carefully also look and monitor building occupancy. But it is a positive step to, to increase some student study space. Thank you, Thomas.
Great, thank you, Kay. So we've got two questions about budgets in the chat there, Martin. One about IT and the other one about regroading annual increments.
Yeah, so on IT, there isn't, there isn't kind of a clear way forward on that yet. But as I said, the first strings are beginning to loosen a little bit. So if you have IT issues that are causing you a problem, can you just let the school office know so that we can, we can identify a list? And some of those we may be able to resolve through IT, some of them we may be able to resolve through local budgets. But we need to know what the problems are and then we can, we can try and work out how to fix them. So I think we've reached the point where don't be backward in coming forward and asking for what you need at, at the moment. I can't promise you'll get it immediately, but we will work on it. Scott, yes, absolutely, I agree. There hasn't been a decision on this yet. My personal expectation is that, that regroading increments and so on will be reinstated at some point this year. We're going ahead with the promotions round. So I recognise that it's frustrating not to have an answer to this question. I think we will before too long. It's, it's worth noting that it's absolutely the case, if you're sitting in seed, that it feels like we're sitting on a huge amount of money and not doing anything with it because we have all these students that we're trying to deal with. The challenges, of course, of that, that's not universally true across the whole university. And there is a kind of high degree of cautiousness about whether students will all come back kind of in January. But every day that goes past, I think the, the assumptions that are being made about students leaving become more and more conservative. And I've certainly been pushing for us to be able to put real student numbers into some of these projections, which, you know, puts real money back into the system. And I think we are getting there. So I can't answer your question, but I expect that we will see a positive answer before too terribly long, fingers crossed.
Can somebody speak to Cassinia's question about scholarships and extensions?
Oh, yeah, I can. I was just about to type an answer actually, but I'll, I'll say it anyway. So an email went out to all PGR on last Thursday after UKRI's announcement of further funding. It's a smaller amount of funding that's available to those who are either moving into their final year with a submission date before September twenty one or those who have things like caring responsibilities and other mitigating circumstances. So yeah, that university has said that it will follow suit on that. So the university-funded studentships should expect to follow the same criteria, at least in terms of KRI. So if you're in one of those two groups, there should be an opportunity to apply. We're waiting for more information, particularly on the application process on that. So I'll send that out as soon as I've got to. Thank you.
Great, so then just the in-person question, so Neil and then Gail.
Sorry, I was looking for the unmute button. So I've been asked, I still can't use it. I've been asked to, by some members of our PGR community that are engaging in TA work, just to feedback, so it's more, more kind of commentary than, than question. A number of PGRs are reporting delays in contracts being received prior to them being expected to engage in the work. Hours allocations that are kind of not being respected or consistent. So, so they're being asked to do more than, than is expected. And that's combined with the fact that some of our PGRs are feeling kind of compelled to accept more work than they realistically feel they can take on. So it's just to kind of, I said, I would feed that back and ask if, if, if that's something that can be looked into because it's affecting a number of PGRs, it isn't just one, it's several that I've spoken to in the last couple of weeks.
So Neil, I think Claire has, has answered the question about contracts in the chat. So if you could encourage the, the individual students to, to contact Claire, then we will, we'll look into that and sort those out. On, on the wider point, nobody should be feeling pressured to do more work than they're able to do. And that just shouldn't be happening and we need to deal with that. Again, feed that back through departments to make sure that work goes somewhere else or we find another way of covering it.
And I just, I raised this issue with Muri last week, the teaching and learning director for MIE. I was also concerned about the numbers of hours being attached to individuals. I mean, we're, we're both clear on the process, it's a hundred and eighty hours maximum. And if the, but, and the supervisors play a kind of key role in approving the amount of hours that are attached. So I think really there, there needs to be some conversation with supervisors in terms of how much they're, how much they're supporting and being critically aware of this issue and the need to be mindful of how much we're asking our PGRs to do.
Great, thank you both. Gail?
Hi, thanks, Connor. Firstly, there's been quite clear direction now for semester two regarding the format for lectures and seminars. But it doesn't seem to be the case for practical computer classes. And there's been questions both from academics and from the students themselves saying, will these purely be online for semester two or not? I would think logistically, a clear message should be that they would be all still running online through the remote desktop connections via Citrix. So that's one sort of observation. And I just wondered if David had any comments about that. And the other thing was around kind of technical issues of delivering computer classes during semester one. There's been issues in particular with international students not being able to connect to Citrix. And so workarounds have been done, for example, in GIS classes by students installing software locally on their machines rather than accessing software via the Citrix client provided by IT services. VPN issues as well for students and also two-factor authentication issues. I was wondering if it would be possible in the next meeting, the next school board, that we could invite someone from IT. I know that that was discussed in the previous school board to kind of really give a bit more of a roadmap of what's the plans and how they're going to perhaps address some of these issues that we've experienced in semester one to provide a better experience really in semester two for students. A lot of these technical issues cause students a lot of stress and anxiety, which goes back to the wellbeing issue. And ultimately, some of these issues are impacting on the intended learning outcomes of modules. And is there any advice that you would provide to academics who have students where ongoing technical issues is impacting on their intended and learning outcomes? So yes, three questions in a nutshell. Thank you.
Is that me? So first of all, we've, we've done the requests for both internal learning outcomes that have to be, be done on campus. So that's gone out to all of you and that information's come back. And then there was a column for anything else. So I'm presuming GIS stuff has been fed through into that conversation. My expectation is, is that we will operate a similar arrangement as of last semester, which is obviously subject to the tier that we are at. So if we are at the similar tier and the way GIS was operating last time in that you were operating remotely, then I should imagine that will continue until it's, it's safe for us all to come back to campus. So that was the first bit. The second bit about IT, I wouldn't wait until the next school board for anything like that. Please draw that to my attention. Mark Shepherd is, is the key conduit, but copy me in. Because, you know, again, these things aren't always straightforward, as we know, because some of it is IT and some of it is e-learning and some of it's other parts of the university. I think, you know, to give people their credit, response has been genuinely quick where they can. And so that we responded to VPN issues and remote access and stuff like that. But obviously, sometimes we just hit our heads against the brick wall and it's very difficult. So do escalate that one as quickly as you possibly can. And then the, what was the third part of the question? About learning outcomes. So one of the key, key things about learning outcomes is, again, it goes back to what we've said previously is that where learning outcomes were going to be challenging, then effectively we needed to change the learning outcomes. So again, I would be interested to know what that is. And if that's semester two activity, then we probably need to look at it pretty quickly if it's, if there is a danger of it not, not meeting the learning outcomes. Now, you know, often the way learning outcomes are written, there's a lot of flexibility with that. But ultimately, that is the one. a lot of flexibility with that. But ultimately, that is the one test of our ability as an institution, which is the ability to meet the learning outcomes. That's where, if we don't meet them, if we can't provide the service to meet them, that's where we're basically open to any kind of claim because of that. So if it's as bad as it could be, please let us know straight away. Then we have to find solutions as quickly as possible.
Okay. And I mean, is there a possibility that we can invite someone from IT to give kind of a bit more of a longer term view of what their plans are to address?
It would probably make sense to invite Chris Sharples, who's our faculty IT contact, who is, I think he's number two in IT or something. He's fairly senior anyway. So he's our designated contact. So he ought to say yes if we invite him.
I believe by the next school board as well, we should have appointed hopefully the next IT director. So on a bigger, more strategic level, there's a chance down the line as well. It will be interesting to hear his or her views on IT strategy in a more broad sense. But maybe the both of them would be good.
I've got no objection, apart from two caveats. One is, it can't turn into an IT helpdesk. And the other is that some of what you're raising, like if that has to come through the school board, that's a failure of the system and the system needs to change. And maybe the school board is the place to kind of push for that systemic change. But I suspect there are other more effective vehicles. But I've got no objection. We've got some other people who want to come onto the agenda next in February as well.
I think that's right. I mean, that was David's response is that, you know, if there are immediate critical issues, we need to fix them now and not be inviting somebody to a school board. But, you know, there are also, I think, some, probably some slightly bigger picture questions around, you know, the way that software systems are set up and whether that's appropriate for online learning and so on. You know, if the board felt they wanted those questions answered, then probably somebody like Chris would be the person to answer those.
Thank you, Martin. There's a question there about sabbaticals from Richard Kingston at 12:51.
Yes, they are being reinstated. The detail of exactly what that means to follow. Sarah, have you heard any more?
Yeah, well, we had Humanities Research Committee this morning. And basically, they just said what you said there. The intention very much is to, well, the quote was very much on the cards, subject to the final sign off of the finances and also agreeing that there's that process because obviously there's applications that have been delayed and there'll be new applications and so on. So that that all needs to be agreed first.
That's the detail that needs to be sorted. There's a strong commitment to doing it. It's just how we manage postponed cases versus potential new cases. And that might vary depending on the demand in different areas.
Thank you. I'd like to pose questions. Is when do we think the decision about progress with fieldwork will be communicated?
Okay, so we had a meeting this morning about that. Basically, what we agreed to do was to, very quickly, in the next few days, because the school position has been that we would look at this in mid-November, which is basically now. We agreed to effectively rate all of our field trips red, amber, green, where red means we're not going. Amber means there's some hope that we might still go and we will work out when the last moment we can make that decision is. And green means we're going. None of them are green. There are two or three that are red and quite a few that are amber. So that's where we are. A message is going to go out to students explaining that to them and explaining that where we're unable to provide the field trip that is supposed to be on the programme, that we will be providing alternatives and possibly some level of refund on the PGT programmes. But there's a kind of sliding scale there between, obviously, we have to offer enough alternate to meet the intended learning outcomes and for the students to get the credits. And then we'll have to make a judgement about, you know, what the direct cost of that is and how much of their kind of fieldwork allowance they've had and what appropriate refund we might make. So the message will say that that decision will be made at the end of the academic year because we don't know whether we might be able to put on some useful events in April, May, even if we have to call off field trips that were due to go in February. So that's the current state of play. Effectively, we should have firm decisions, either that we're not going or that the decision will be made probably in early January on all the trips, probably by the end of the week, shortly thereafter. Is that fair, Kelly?
Yes, that's fair. And we'll be communicating with fieldwork leads about it as well, just giving them the information on what we think is amber and red.
Great. Thank you. Karen, it looks like your question's been answered. But if it hasn't, do let us know in the chat. There's a ton of links coming out.
All right, they're for me, Thomas. They're all the ones I referred to in my presentation, which I said I would put in at the end of the meeting. So I'm just putting those in.
And Jen's just come in and talked also about the challenges of getting online. Jen, are you saying it doesn't work, that link? Or what's?
It's, sorry, apologies. They're very specific circumstances through the Help Me Get Online route. It's particularly aimed at students from, apologies, I always get terminology's wrong, but it's a low participation, they put backgrounds, it's not for, I have bad wifi necessarily. And we've had lots of geographers, we've had applications rejected from that process. I guess just trying to illustrate it's not the kind of catchall, I've been referred to the system so many times. And we're sending students there that are bouncing, which is kind of adding to the frustration. And if I may, just to show my appreciation of opening more study spaces within our campus, because that will really help. Students want to come on campus and access our wifi and our spaces for a whole host of different reasons.
Thanks. There's a question from Abby about last year's second year students and field course refunds at 1:02 PM in the chat.
Yeah, so leaving it until deciding for this year, later this academic year, doesn't help the students who missed out last year and probably won't get anything to fill in for that. Is that part of the decision making as well?
Undergraduates are really complicated, Abby, because we're basically going to take legal advice on undergraduates because their fees are paid by the student loan company. And so we don't even know if we're allowed to give them a cheque or whether we would have to give a cheque to the student loan company. So, I mean, what we're hoping to do with undergraduates where at all possible is lay on alternate experiences. And even to the point, you know, that we discussed this morning, that, you know, if we get to the point where we feel that we owe them something, you know, maybe that we can't give them a cheque, but we can rent them a room in a hotel for graduation evening or whatever. So that one is really complicated, which is why, when I said earlier, there will be a different message going to UGTs and PGTs. PGTs will talk about refunds. UGTs won't until we get our head around what on earth that might mean.
Thank you. It's really helpful to understand a bit more of that process. Thank you.
Great. We've talked a lot of questions in the chat. And there were people who sent me questions who haven't posed them, just to say, Narendra, you just raised your hand. Was that an accident?
No, it wasn't an accident. Quick question, Martin. Because of recent events in Falafel with security, et cetera, why are the security guards posted outside of university buildings such as Ellen Wilkinson? And last week, I was asked to show ID. What is the policy on that? And why is it happening if we're trying to build trust with our students?
I have no idea, Narendra. I really don't know why that's happening. I didn't know it was. I'll ask the question.
Great.
If I get a sensible answer, I'll let you know. But I don't know.
Thank you very much.
I'm really sorry. I missed your question there in the chat there, Narendra. Thanks for asking it. So there was a question by somebody who was then unable to come. And they talked about asking it at the discipline level, but it is, I believe this is a school level thing, is about workload allocation and whether or not the school is going to sort of do anything to recognise the extra time required to shift the curriculum online and redesign aspects of it in the WHAM.
Yeah, so this has been, this has been talked about a bit at school level. It's been talked about at faculty level. The current view in humanities is that we don't want to start fiddling with the WHAM. That's not, it doesn't mean that we don't recognise that, you know, a huge amount of work is involved in everything that everybody's doing. But just, you know, the WHAM is, the WHAM is an imperfect model. It's also a very kind of, you know, contentious beast in the sense that it impacts directly on kind of what we all do and changes to the WHAM, you know, usually involve weeks and months of negotiation and are very kind of carefully calibrated. And frankly, you know, doing it now in the circumstances that we're in with the complexity of what everybody's doing, we just weren't convinced we could do it sensibly. And so, you know, the view has been that the appropriate way to manage this is kind of at departmental and programme level, where there is a clear view of what people are doing. And, you know, the local managers should be able to balance workloads. And if they can't, then that's a conversation that needs to happen with the school so that we can put more resource into, you know, to make that, to make that work. So whilst I take the point that, and we have talked about this, that you could rework, you could have a COVID WHAM. I think by the time we'd agreed on a COVID WHAM, we'd like to think we'd all been vaccinated.
All right. Thank you, Martin. So are there any other questions before we move on? Okay. So the next item on the agenda is an update from the Senate.
Yes, hi. Hello.
Eric.
Hi. I really am just attending, just to more or less introduce myself because I wasn't able to attend Senate last time because I was just finishing paternity leave. But I've been very interested to hear the issues at seed level. And I think it's a great initiative to link these up, especially with the faculty as, and I may reach out as well to other schools to try and have this kind of bottom-up communication, as well as what can sometimes feel a bit like top-down. But if I were to update in general over the course of the summer, Senate did me quite often, I think about twice as often as usual, to try and get a handle on the COVID circumstances. And I think, from a Senate point of view, I think one of the things that, some that we were really trying to deal with initially were the financial consequences, which were, that I think handled around May, which would have been your last school meeting. But then subsequently, kind of turned to how we were going to deal with the online teaching versus blended learning, on-campus experience. And that was difficult over the summer because of the government changing rules. But then once, so I was quite involved in what I, what I and some others would have encouraged was more online delivery to just free up some of the workload initially. But that was, that was difficult to kind of implement because the train had sort of left the, or the horse had left the stable by September or so. So subsequently, Senate has been sort of dealing with more of the consequences of that shift. And I think they've done as well as possible. But I think one of the things that we definitely need more of is this kind of real-time feedback through the levels of the university. So that's why I'm very encouraged to participate. And next time we'll have a concrete update. And if you have any questions for me in the meantime, please just let me know. Thanks for inviting me as well.
Okay, thanks. Just one question for me is, do you know where Zahra is?
No.
The other school. She doesn't want to talk to me.
No, I'll try and find out because there's, there's different levels of participation in Senate. And I'll try and find out next time.
Yeah, okay. Brilliant. Thanks, Eric. Okay. So I guess there's a question of whether or not people have got specific things that they want fed up. I mean, I think there's a, there's a general sense that IT systems aren't quite up to scratch, particularly in terms of enabling students to be online. But Gail had a series of very specific issues around access to particular forms of software. That aspect of student wellbeing doesn't seem to have been discussed very much. Or come back down towards us anyway. So I would like to flag that as something that could be dealt with at a more senior level as well. Does anybody have any questions for Eric?
Um, could I say something?
Go ahead.
So I think, Eric, it's a complete mystery known whether it's easier to be teaching online and it takes away from our workload. It's about four times more difficult. It's very distracting. It's really, really hard work. Any idea that you can sort of try and teach online and face-to-face is pretty much doesn't work for. It's tiring for the students. So all of these things that we're getting from them about their workload, I can understand that because it is actually much more tiring doing everything online. And so what was maybe a reading exercise that you could take away or you could do somewhere else, it's all online. You're in front of the computer repeatedly. And so the amount of time that you can actually do with that is just exhausting. We also have meetings and stuff. So I think it's that type of thing with the balance of that, thinking about, yes, we have to offer a really good student experience, but maybe we also have to think about compromising in some ways around the workloads, not just for students but for staff as well, and appreciating that this material takes longer to prepare. It's more exhausting to deliver. It's more difficult to mark. And we've also got certainly in geography, a huge amount more students. And so we're having to mark more scripts. We're having to deal with more academic advisory sessions. We're having to deal with, and then there's messages coming with every five minutes from someone wanting us to contact our students. They must feel bombarded by the amount of information that's being sent their way and not in a very central and controlled way. And so I think that perhaps that is just making people feel weary, students and staff. So I think if that could be communicated to Senate, then, you know, we have to have some leeway. We don't have any holiday time because of the staggered semesters. So there's no time to take a breather.
Yes. Thank you for all of those comments. I think that's your, your comments there were very much in line with some of the discussions we had over the summer. And some of the elected members of Senate tried to communicate that it wasn't that online teaching would be less work. In fact, as you're saying, it's more work. But the idea of trying to do two different types of But the idea of trying to do two different types of instruction and to prepare for both just in case was a bit too much to expect either of them to be done well. And so Senate's responsibility is to manage the teaching and research quality across the institution. And there was a lot of discussion about, for example, there are certain medical degrees and professional degrees that need in face-to-face teaching. And that's, that makes sense. And so some of us in the humanities said, well, if we went online, that would free the campus up more for those face-to-face that really needed it, that were COVID central and so forth. So, so we did try and communicate that at the time. But it was the decisions, as you know, were fed down differently than that. And I would, I would certainly feed up that that's your position now, having done it. But I will also try and figure out ways to communicate these across the institution so that it's not just kind of us criticizing another member of Senate, a senior leader or whatnot. It would be good to get more real-time feedback on these processes because I completely agree with you.
Anyone else? All right. So we're dipping our toes in, 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 into this approach to school boards. The next one is an update from our representatives at the Faculty Committee, which is quite recently formed.
I think, I think it's, I think Jenna has sent her apologies for today. So it's, it's just, just me that's here. And I'm not entirely sure how helpful my update will be, but maybe it'll give a little bit of context. So the, the Faculty Committee, as you mentioned, was newly created last academic year. And it has met three times so far, and the next meeting is planned for January. I actually wasn't at the last meeting. There's a little bit of a kind of a sense that it is still forming in terms of purpose and in terms of format, shall I say. So there has been a lot of discussion from the, the members of the committee about how they would like it to run. So far, it has essentially been a series of presentations delivered by senior management with very little time for any discussion or questions. There was a suggestion in, so the two meetings last year were April and May. So obviously a good amount of that has been focused on adapting to the pandemic. There was a suggestion from committee members that we would meet over summer to try and discuss in particular some staff concerns a little more. This was rejected by the committee. And hence there was a gap between May and October. I was just before this meeting having a look at the, the minutes from the October meeting, which was the one that I wasn't able to make. And it does look like the, it's still on the agenda for future meetings to clarify the format of the committee meetings and the process for proposing agenda items. We will be able, Jenna and myself, to share papers and presentations that are circulated with committee members across the school, which might be useful in some cases. There was a bit of uncertainty at first about whether we were allowed to do that within our roles. But that looks like it has now been confirmed. And as I say, it looks, what it's meant so far is that as, as elected representatives, Jenna and I so far don't feel like we have done very much on the committee from a C point of view. But as the committee forms, hopefully there will be more scope for us finding out what agenda items and issues colleagues want us to take forward and more scope for having time to address those within the meetings. But we can keep you updated at future school boards if useful.
Please do. Are there any, Martin, yes?
Sorry, Thomas. I haven't got a little blue hand because I think I'm a host. So I, I completely agree with Laura. The Faculty Committee has not yet found its feet or its purpose. I mean, it's new because it exists in statute, but it hasn't existed de facto for years. So it's a question of working out what it does. And obviously there's kind of an overlap as well because school board has a direct line of communication with Senate. So, you know, we need to work out what, what goes through the Faculty Committee and what goes directly to Senate. And I think Eric probably put his finger on it earlier, which is that, you know, the real top-level stuff about kind of teaching and academic matters in the university probably needs to go straight to Senate. But Faculty Committee is an opportunity to get items for discussion directly into F L T. So if there are things that we know are faculty competencies that aren't going to have to go to the university, that's probably the stuff that should be going to Jenna and Laura to, to raise at the Faculty Committee.
Thanks, Martin. Does anybody have any questions or anything? All right. Thanks, Laura. I really appreciate you coming along and we'll hopefully see more of you next time. So the next item on the agenda is the Dean's annual visit. I just wanted to sort of flag that this is coming up in two weeks' time. And sort of open the floor to say, you know, are there? So there's different ways of doing the Dean's annual visit. And, and my sense is that he's very often faced with kind of a room of people who aren't asking questions but have questions. And I was wondering if there was a way that we could perhaps, you know, identify some priorities that we wanted him to speak to as a school to make sure that they are covered. So, so I've had some sort of agenda items sent to me and then there's some things that have come out of the discussion today. And I just want to kind of name a few things. I think there's this thing about, you know, IT strategy and the shift to online and whether or not it's fit for purpose that we also want to take up at the next school board. I think I would, from the questions that we've had and from, from stuff that was submitted to me before today, I'd really like him to speak to what's happened at Falafel and, and, and what the discussions are at a senior level around, around the fact that there's been an occupation, there's been demonstrations. There's members of staff have now been suspended for an alleged racist incident. And we're, we're making national headlines on, on a very regular basis. Are there other issues that people want to raise? And, and you know, I am willing to act as, as, as a spokesperson if necessary. But as a, as a school, are there things that we think are important that we want him to speak to?
Thomas, could I, could I just add? Sorry, I don't have a blue hand as well because I think I'm a co-host. And just to say, I, I have emailed school and all staff in relation to the, to the Dean's visit to encourage people to submit questions as well through to, through to the Faculty Office. And so obviously in addition to, you know, if you wanted to submit a, a school response as such, you could use that, that channel. But also just an opportunity to encourage people as well. If they can't think of anything today to feed through to you, then they should definitely submit their question in advance as well. That would be helpful.
Thanks, Kay. I've got Linda Danyako. You're still muted?
Yes, I'm unmuted. Thank you. So thank you, Thomas. Yeah, just one thing that quite intrigued me when I saw, when I read the Dean's e-message a few days ago, when he made reference to disappointment about some of the refability of some colleagues. I just wonder if he could briefly talk a little, just expand a little bit about that. Obviously not naming names, but you know, just give us a little bit more general idea of what he's alluding to.
Thanks, Linda. Yacko?
Thanks, Thomas. It might be somewhat premature, but I, I do think that the sooner we start conversations around how teaching might look in a post-COVID world and what, what the kind of changes and learnings and resources that we've generated and learned and could help us with in terms of, of, of making, you know, changes into the future and without just by default gravitating back. Now, I do think that that's pretty much a conversation at all the levels that we've mentioned. But it's really important to have those conversations at faculty level and to, to ask what progress are there. And I guess my important point, cutting across a lot of what's going on over here is just, you know, the purpose of some of these meetings and the mode in which they are run is often communicating stuff in the form of reports and briefings and things like that. And, and what I'm, what I'm asking for is the opportunity to be involved for those of us who are at the rock face of doing these things, to be involved in making decisions and helping to plan be part of planning the future. And if, if, if that's possible without stifling the process, but to, to, to literally just help the process from those who are involved and not be taught what to do.
Thanks. No, I think that's a really good two-sided point there. And that second point about how do we sort of strengthen participation and decision-making within the university, I think, is, is absolutely key. So I've got Yosef. Yeah.
Sorry, I just wanted to chip in. Yeah, because, oh, sorry. I'll just go quickly. So just to reassure Jekko. So this morning I was in a meeting very much in relation to what you were saying. And also tomorrow morning, there's a meeting with e-learning leads from the schools and directors of teaching and learning very much about, you know, how do we draw upon this process? But I also think there's, there's an important part of all of this is that I don't think we have to wait for staged managed events like this and Dean's visit and so on to, to take action. And I think there's sometimes a misconception about how processes work. We, we, we are all empowered to do stuff. And I, I understand that sometimes it's not always clear which way to do it. But we're very much responsive to ideas and, and ideas coming from, from, from colleagues about how to change, improve and develop. Now, whether that needs another forum for that is another matter. But equally, you know, don't let the, the structure stifle ambition. Let's, if, if people have got ideas about how we change things, because one of the great things, I say great, but one of the benefits of this space is we're all probably seeing a lot more of each other than we are of our families, you know. So we are seeing people in meetings regularly and having conversations which we didn't typically have at the frequency that we are having. So as I say, don't, don't wait around. Let's, let's capture the moment. And if there's ideas about what we can take from now and what we're learning, and there's definitely stuff that we are learning, then feed that in, you know, or, or, and you've done that to a certain extent anyway with your community's activity. You, you've showed the way of, of developing something that has emerged from, from, from where we've been working. So again, just that issue of don't feel as if you've got to wait for permission to, to, to develop stuff.
I was, I was going to make a similar point. Yeah, I mean, if you think back to the dim and distant past before COVID, we all had kind of complete freedom over how we delivered our, our modules. And I recognise in the last kind of seven or eight months, there's, there's been a certain amount of kind of top-down just to make sure that we all kind of learn at the same speed how to do all this new stuff. But when we go back, I don't think there's anybody going to be saying that you, you can't use the best bits of what, what, what you've learned over the past seven months to, to improve what, what we did previously.
All right. Thanks, both. I've got Eric then Richard.
Hi, yes. Just to respond to, I, I think it would be very good to organise some kind of collaborative discussion about picking up best practices from the pandemic to see what will happen post-pandemic, because I think that was a very good point. And, and perhaps faculty level is the right level to, to feed those up because I think in the same way we were discussing the Faculty Board, that, that's kind of a space that gets caught in between the kind of top-down, bottom-up space. But maybe the Dean could support a wider kind of what would be humanities, teaching and learning response for the post-COVID period. So maybe he might, I don't know, if it's a question, but more like, would he support a kind of across faculty-wide discussion about how to do humanities teaching in the future?
Thanks, Eric. That was a lot more articulate and constructive than I can be with a small child on my shoulder. Richard and then Michael and then Gail?
Thank you. It's just a question about the transition from semester one into semester two, and the fact that there is absolutely no gap. So when teaching finishes, it's then a period of exams and then we'll all be frantically marking. And at the same time, semester two starts. And what is the possibility for shifting the start of semester two back by a week, if not two weeks? Because we've essentially got time at the end of the semester in May, you know, for the semester to finish a bit later.
It's quite a question. I suspect that they'll be like, that ship has sailed, but it's, it's, it's an interesting one. Michael and then Gail?
Thank you. A brief question for the Dean. And I would be grateful if you could wrap it up in relation to Jekko and Richard's points because it's, it's similar. I would be grateful if you could paraphrase something along the lines of planning for semester two. Where, where would he see faculty's role and responsibilities in relation to staffing and the requirement for physical delivery on campus? As I personally am foreseeing a scenario whereby there is a requirement to deliver the two hours. And yet the tier restrictions will ask that staff are not on campus. And I thought these, these concepts seem to be mutually exclusive in some regards. If that makes sense, we're not to be on campus under tier-two restrictions, but we are to physically deliver a session. So some faculty's role and clarity in that would be greatly appreciated.
Okay. Gail?
I am building on what Jacko said earlier around sort of long-term vision for teaching going forward and after semester two. I just wondered, is there any kind of piece of work being done on why in certain programmes we've recruited so well? Like, what are the drivers for that? And is it because of the change in sort of teaching format to a course being online opposed to being face-to-face? So for example, in the programme of G I Science, I think student numbers have increased sixfold from last year. Like looking at kind of what are the drivers behind that? Just wondering if anything like that is being done at the faculty level?
Okay. Thanks, Gail. Joseph?
Hi. Yeah, thanks. I think beside the, the big tragedy of COVID and the implications of teaching and learning and student recruitment, I think the big elephant in the room, and, and I'm not sure if the Dean is the right person to address that is, is also Brexit and Brexit coming to force with the first of January. And I, I don't know if the Dean is, is able to answer that, but, but you know, there's implications certainly in student mobility, student recruitment from Europe, staff mobility and so on. And I wonder if there's some contingency planning and I'm sure there will be in some form. But, but I think that's also something I'd be really interested in maybe taking forward.
No, I think that's a perfectly appropriate question for, for the Dean. He's, he's part of those strategic discussions. So great. great. Thanks. I will attempt to formulate this into an email and ping it off through the, the channel Kay raised. I think unless there's somebody who's got anything for any other business. That's the end of the dean part. Next part of the agenda would be any other business.
Thomas, I wouldn't mind saying something if that's okay.
Please.
Locate my hand again there. Yeah. I mean, it was just really to say, I think it's great that we're thinking ahead with the, all the teaching and learning, just to back up what Gail was saying. But I also just wanted to make sure that everybody was aware as well that humanities is leading the way to some extent with looking at, at post-COVID research kind of rebooting. And, you know, that we're the first faculty that's really looking in earnest about what we can do to, to recognize and address the problems that there've been this year in terms of everyone's research trajectories and strategies and so on. So I just really wanted to make people aware of that really, and to thank everyone for the input into the various surveys that have been coming around on that as well. So yeah, so there will be some actions that, that come from that specifically from the faculty.
Great. Thanks, Sarah. Gail?
Yeah. And just one other thing I wanted to highlight is I've been invited by Angus Herman, who's the interim director of IT to feed into a survey, which will be looking at what we feel IT services is doing well and not so well. And so just really to invite anyone who wants to feed into that survey to send any comment that you have to me, maybe with some specific examples. And then I can put those in. The deadline for the surveys to be submitted is on Wednesday, the 25th of November. So if anyone has anything that they want to feed back to me with, maybe if you can send it to me for Tuesday, the 24th. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Gail. Offering to be the lightning rod for for all IT complaints. Is there any other, other, other business? All right. I just heard a little moment there. I think somebody forgotten to mute themselves or whatever. I think that is us done. Thank you very much for your contributions. And everyone who's, who's chipped in. We will, the next kind of school level discussion thing, as I've said, is in a couple of weeks with the dean. Where I think he should don a suit of armor, to be honest. There's, there's, there's a lot to take issue with. Maybe you can pass it on to the head of IT when he comes in February. So our next meeting in February is February 2nd, I believe. But you'll all get an invite. I will come up with, I will send around a call for agenda items earlier next time. In possession of a, of a very new baby at the moment and that limits my capacity to be a bit proactive on certain things. So thank you very much. And we'll see you either in a couple of weeks or in a few months. Hope you have a lovely rest of semester.